I've worked with the city. I was in San Francisco, City of Congress. We ran the city election. Somewhere else up there.
Oh, you guys had Tech Channel.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Were you in charge of that?
No, economic development was housed in the same spot, is it? That's why I saw the people that were running.
I was like, what?
Pete Donelli has been active all over Albuquerque and he is a prominent figure. He's done so much for the city of Albuquerque. He's not paying me to do any of this promotion for him. But Pete has done so much for the city of Albuquerque, not only as an employee, but he certainly has taken a shot at running the beautiful city. And he is very knowledgeable of what's going on in the city and the politics. So there's no filter with him because I know he doesn't cuss at all. So that's a flush. And he's got some commentary to do, but I'm gonna have him introduce the candidates and he'll talk basically about the rules. And we'll turn it over to ladies and gentlemen. A round of large applause for Pete Donelli.
I see, always thank you so much. I also want to thank Lindy's Diner for allowing us to use their lovely facility. What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna read the ground rules. And one of the things my experience has been with debates, I never liked listening to the moderators. So I'm gonna probably turn most of this over to all four of you that are here. So these are the ground rules. Candidates will be given two minutes for an opening statement. Please adhere to that because I've got a cup here and I'll cut you off if you go beyond the two minutes. Then you will also be given two minutes to answer any of the questions. And then you will give them three minutes for a closing statement. So what I'm gonna do now is I'm gonna turn it over to the first candidate. And I'm gonna suggest that you identify who you are, how you're employed, the years that you've lived in the district, and give us your three top priorities of your elected city council for the city council district two.
I'm Connie Beehill. Can you hear me in the back? Way back. I'm gonna scream because I don't talk that loud. Of all the candidates here, I have the most at stake. Because I grew up here, I went to school at St. Mary's, and I love Albuquerque. And I live about five blocks from here. So downtown, your businesses, we have a business. I get it. I totally, 1,000%, support the business sector. Because you are the heartbeat of Albuquerque. I grew up here in Wells Park. I went to St. Mary's for nine years, Highland High, scholarship to New Mexico Tech, fellowship to UNO Med School. Spent most of my adult life in medical research, but I have been an executive director for Habitat for Humanity. I have served on city council in Idaho for two years. I have built a community center with a community block grant. And I have been very, very active after returning back to Albuquerque seven years ago. I spent over 35 years here in Albuquerque, either in graduate school or living here, growing up. So I love downtown and I'm here to support you. The three top priorities. Number one is the obvious. Support the business sector by reducing the crime. Reduce the crime by handling the drug addiction issues and the homelessness. And number three, let's revitalize this downtown. No more empty buildings, no more for sale signs, no more people sleeping on your stoop and doing everything imaginable there. I wanna support this downtown. I'm proud of downtown. And for those of you who have stayed here, I applaud you. For those of you who live here, I applaud you even more. Because I know what it's like to live in an area where you do have some issues. And with that said, I'd like to pass it on. Thank you very much.
Hello. Good afternoon. My name is Steven Baca. I'm a fifth generation North Valley native, third generation Valley high school grad. My family has a deep, rich history in the North Valley. My great-grandparents, Toby and Lucy, used to own a restaurant and a Texaco gas station in North Valley back in the 1970s and 80s. And their entrepreneurial spirit is what's kept me up and going and I wanna keep that alive in this district. My main top priorities are crime, the homeless issue, and business. First off, the homeless issue and crime are intertwined with each other. But those two affect business, so we have to get a handle on the first two in order for business to prosper. So going forward, that's my plan. Thank you.
All right. Hi, everybody. My name is Zachary Quintero. I'm a proud fourth-generation New Mexican, proud Latino. I'm focusing on homelessness, behavioral health, and addiction and keeping our graduates here and revitalizing the corridor that once was downtown. And I say that because right now we're at a critical point for our city's history for downtown. And I wanna give a shout out to Lindy's Diner and the staff and everybody putting this together here because I feel they know what's at stake for our city. I feel that they know they're trying to bring in more foot traffic, they're trying to start new businesses, they're tired of seeing vacant buildings, and they want something done. But our priorities have been different from where the votes have been. And I wanna make sure that we get new leadership for new results on those issues. My name is Zachary Quintero. I hope to earn your vote and I hope to earn your respect. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody, and thank you so much for the opportunity to speak today. Big thanks to R.C. and all the folks who organized this wonderful event. Big thanks to Lindy's Diner for their wonderful, wonderful business and wonderful, wonderful food. I just wanna take this very first moment to thank everyone who's running in this race because we have this tremendous opportunity not to vote for the lesser of evils, but for the greater of goods. My name is Robert Blanca Nelson. I'm a proud Filipino immigrant. I'm a longtime community activist and organizer. I've lived here in Albuquerque for almost 20 years, 12 of those years being in the district, and five of the last ones being here in Wells Park. I'm running because I have one question at heart. And that's why, why aren't things getting any better? When we knock on doors, when we talk to folks and our families and our neighbors all around this district, they always say the same things. They say, "We feel like we are left out of all the decision-making in our city." And we feel like the solutions we are promoting are only made in isolation. They're just Band-Aids. And for me, our three priorities here in this city for our campaign and for our community is, one, we have to stabilize our community. We have to deal with homelessness and crime from a systemic level. That means we have to start our very first public health department. Albuquerque is the only city of its size that doesn't have one. And once we stop the bleeding, once we stabilize our community, once people are able to take a breath, our second priority is to harness the power of our diversity. Our community, Albuquerque and New Mexico, is the future of our country when it comes to that. Our third priority is that once we stabilize, we have to look at how can we be a capital of any industry we're choosing, meaning could we be and can we be the number-one city for small businesses here in the United States? Thank you so much.
Thank you, candidates. One of the things I do wanna emphasize, you're gonna be given two minutes to answer the questions. I'd encourage you to take all your time with those. Okay, Jerome, do you wanna ask the question? Or do you...
Yeah. My question is, I brought my business downtown on a vision of revitalization four years ago from Nob Hill. As we see these dilapidated buildings, as we see this homeless community getting bigger and bigger, it feels like city council has kind of left us all out to dry and with no answers whatsoever as to what they're going to do. Obviously, I've not seen anything, so I wanna know what your vision is of revitalization.
And what is your name? All right, Ron, you wanna start with it? You got two minutes.
Thanks, Jerome. I really appreciate it. And thanks for having your business here in downtown. We really appreciate that so much. When we talk about crime, when we talk about revitalizing our city, we need to deal with more systemic issues. We have to acknowledge that, one, we've been doing a lot of really good work right now, but we have to go the extra mile and do more. That means we have to ask ourselves these questions. What does it mean to be the capital for small businesses in our city? And to address crime and homelessness in these areas? What does it mean when a person is a criminal before they are a criminal? And when once you start to break that cycle for folks? Once we start to dig at the root of all those issues in terms of crime and homelessness, poverty, mental health, substance abuse, we can start to thrive in this downtown, not have to worry about having to clean up our sidewalks. We can actually get people into affordable housing. A city should be able to support its residents and its community members with good wages, with supports to local businesses. We should have a city that supports job growth and employment and revitalization in a way that's meaningful with our communities. We also need a city that supports how people can be more successful in starting a business here in downtown. Because it's so hard to do that right now.
My name is Zachary Quintero. Thank you so much for the question. So this is one of my favorite questions, actually, because I've talked with a lot of businesses along the central corridor, along, not just the central corridor, but into the downtown area. Dan, as called for short, Downtown Area News, we've talked about. Yeah? But the main part that I feel we need is somebody with technical and prior experience on these issues. I'd be the only economist on city council. I have a direct jobs plan to recruit 5,000 graduates from our high schools, our community colleges, our trade schools, and our university into our economy. We need to build out that pipeline infrastructure that feeds in not just the foot traffic that we're desperate to see down here, but actually creates opportunities for people to be innovative, to be able to create something like a creative arts accelerator that connects artists not just to capital, but to bookkeeping, to basic management principles. Then we start to see that community wealth build up from the grassroots level. That's how we get that done on the technical side. On the bigger picture, we have to talk about homelessness and we have to talk about public safety, we have to talk about behavioral health and addiction. We need to make sure we don't criminalize homelessness, behavioral health, or addiction. That's why I went out of my way to seek out the endorsement of the police officers' union as well as the firefighters' union. I'm proud to be the only candidate that has their support. And that's because of my public health plan. I wanna have mobile healthcare units go into our district and connect people to services as well as making sure we can transition to affordable housing and connecting them to jobs. It's gonna take a plan to get out of this, and that's what revitalization is.
Fully agree with you. This area, the homelessness and the crime issue largely affects business. And it's frustrating, city council and the city in general has completely ignored this issue. The first thing that we need to do is push the city to renegotiate or get rid of the McLendon settlement. If you don't know what the McLendon settlement is, it's a settlement that does not allow APD to arrest for most misdemeanor crimes. They can only issue a citation. And we have to get a handle on these lower-level crimes so they don't spiral out of control. That's the first issue we need to take care of when it comes to the crime issue and the homeless issue down here. Here. My advice to you directly of what you can do right now as a business owner is get all your other business owners in this area and reach out to BCSO. BCSO has been very responsive in how they approach the issues. The Southeast Heights business owners reached out to BCSO and the sheriff responded immediately to the crime concerns. So that's my advice on what you can do right here, right now. Thank you.
Hi, Jerome, and hi, business people. I'm not like these guys. I'm not about rhetoric. Don't kid yourselves. We got ourselves in a hole. It's gonna take a lot of hard work to get us out. It's not gonna take a divided city council. Right now, all the Dems vote one way, all the reps vote another way. Okay? Nobody's talking about real solutions. If you wanna check out Facebook Live, I was on PBS just a few minutes ago talking about a real plan to solve the homeless problem, one piece of it. The biggest part of what is causing homelessness cannot be ignored. Other cities are sending them here because we are a targeted city. We have so many nonprofits, so many freebies, so many things that if you walk out of Reno, Nevada, like I know a young man and his mother did, she got a free apartment in less than two months. She's got free Medicaid, she's got a free apartment, she's got free food. All on our dime, taxpayers like yourselves. I'm saying, where's the mayor in all of this? Well, he's planning a $14 million housing for the homeless, okay? He has no plan and he's wanting to tax you guys in a bond, 14 million. I wanna say, let's ask the city council and the mayor for accountability before we give them any more money. In terms of the police, I helped R.C. with my business group, GABA. We helped to sign your petition to get you a substation. I've talked to so many businesses. Yes, they're here for a show, for PR, but I wanna know that you guys feel protected down here. I wanna know that you're not gonna be robbed, you're not gonna be stabbed like we are in Wells Park. And I am really dedicated and passionate, and I have started a campus. Have you been in the news? We are trying to build a campus through volunteer architects, volunteer businesses. If you're a business in downtown and you wanna help support a real solution, then please consider joining GABA. But the other thing I wanna tell you is, the police say their hands are tied, but we have ordinances in place. They are not arresting for vandalism. Ask any one of these buildings, all of their plate glass windows have been broken with no consequence to the person who does it. I say, end of that. If we need to have them do community service, then so be it. But we cannot be a walking target. The grocery store, every single day, robberies like crazy. How can we support this city while the police are not really doing their job? And I don't care about the McLendon settlement. I'm sorry, we have ordinances in place that they should be able to arrest for misdemeanor crimes because right now they're walking away. Thank you.
So the specific question is, do you have a specific proposal on how you're gonna revitalize this downtown area? Mayor Keller is now suggesting that the answer is the Barellis, rail yards development. And it's anticipated that they're gonna start out with $50 million in investment to clean it up. What is your position, what is your plan to revitalize the downtown area? And are you in favor of the rail yards redevelopment program?
So two parts to that. The first is, what is my position and plan to revitalize downtown? Two points directly. One is to streamline the permitting process and make sure that when we're talking about building owners that have held onto their property but let the conditions run down terribly to a point where it's, you know, irretrievable on being able to make it something, the city take action. And then we actually repurpose these buildings with locally grown businesses. I mentioned before my jobs plan to bring in 5,000 graduates from both high schools, C&amp;M, the trades, and our university to start businesses here in downtown. We do that through an arts accelerator program. That's a direct tangible plan to revitalization and ensuring that we have community wealth as a priority. The second part of that for the rail yards question, this is something we gotta approach with real caution and full community inclusion on. The reason why I say that is because Barellis has experienced massive amounts of disproportionate effects when it comes to air quality, when it comes to, you know, street traffic and not being able to have a fair seat at the table. And I wanna make sure moving forward, if any development happens, that we actually meet with the community one-on-one and run it by the full neighborhoods. I wanna see door knocking done. I wanna see direct neighborhood inclusion like that. It means something when five generations of families are being priced out of their home. You know, I hear stories at the doors where family members are telling me, "Yeah, my kid just graduated high school, but he's not gonna stay here, she's not gonna stay here, they're not gonna stay here." They can't find a job, they're not gonna be able to be connected to a job after going through our college system. And that, we need better. We need better. And that's where I'm offering those direct plans. The cost estimate on that, I actually think, is quite low. I actually think it's gonna be a lot more expensive. And for that, we need to be really cautious about. We saw how ART went down, we saw that we prioritized that over public safety, and we're gonna need true oversight and true guidance on this issue. Thank you.
The first thing we have to do still goes back to the crime. We can talk about revitalization. We can actually go forward with the revitalization, but if we don't keep a cap on the homeless issue and the crime issue down here, it's just gonna revert back to what it was. And that seems to be the trend of every mayor's administration, regardless of party affiliation. They take care of it a little bit and then they let it go. That seems to be the continuing trend amongst city leaders in general. But first, we have to get on that crime issue and the homeless issue immediately in order to make the plans go forward. That's my first thing to revitalize downtown. Once you do that, everything else will fall in place. And in terms of the rail yards development, that is an absolute no for me. That is, to me, another art project. And if we do go forward with that, we have to get major, major approval from residents in the district if we do go for that. And I would even say leave it up for voters to decide. But that is an absolute no for me. I view that as another ART project. Thank you.
Well, yesterday I talked with Steve. Steve and I graduated from Highland High School together, and I came to talk to him to say, "What's going on?" SOMOS just happened, okay? Paul Silverman, who built the Imperial Building, has two sons. Adam and David have single-handedly pretty much put SOMOS with some of their firsts. That was a huge boost to downtown. But the question I asked, 'cause I remember there used to be SOMOS downtown, SOMOS central, right? SOMOS moved to the Civic Center, and that's cool, but what about the businesses and supporting them? What I would do, number one first thing, is move the market from the park downtown. Why don't we just close off all the streets like they do in Las Cruces? Every single week, how many of you have been to the Las Cruces Market? Anybody? Downtown, you know what I'm talking about. They close off all the streets in downtown Las Cruces. It's a super cool event. It's safe, they've closed off the traffic, people are forced to park out and walk in. And that is so cool. I'd like to see, like I said, that event, the market, is doing great, brings lots of people. But why don't we support Lindy's? Why don't we support the hat shop? Why don't we support and bring people down here to know about the library, to know about Red Door that just opened up, to know about that cool, humble coffee? And the developer that made that upstairs apartment complex? People are still investing in downtown Albuquerque. They haven't given up. But we've got to do something immediate to bring a new life to this city. That's one thing. Another thing typically is, you guys see some police sometimes here and there, but we've got to have a dedicated police substation. We have to know who's gonna be available at any given time. We have to know that there's gonna be guys on bikes, that if someone comes in here with a knife and tries to stab one of your customers or you, then you have immediate help. That's step number two. Okay? And as far as the rail yards, I don't believe $7 million's gonna help it right now. Thank you.
I'm glad we asked this question about revitalization. And it starts really with stabilizing our community. That's why we must start our first public health department. And like I mentioned before, Albuquerque is the only city of its size that doesn't have one. And for us, that would mean how we actually address healthy, healthy economic development in our downtown corridor. There's no reason why we shouldn't be the number-one city for small businesses in America. And the way that we do that is, one, we have to make sure that our community is involved in that economic development so that your voice, all of you here sitting at these tables, are involved in how that plan develops, how that vision unfolds for all of us. Two, we have to be able to bring in the kind of resources that are outside of our state. We all know that New Mexico doesn't have a lot of money, but you know what? There are a lot of resources and money outside of our state. I specialize in bringing new money in the form of federal and national grants. I've helped raise $9.6 million in the last three years. And on top of that, when we talk about stabilizing, we're talking about getting underneath that all, when we're talking about crime and homelessness, I'm the only candidate that has direct experience dealing with homelessness issues, getting people into housing. I helped found Albuquerque Heading Home way back in 2011 to help people transition from the street to permanent supportive housing. And once we stabilize, I'll go again, we can actually set our sights on becoming a capital of any industry, we can become a capital for small business. We can actually start to bring in resources, we can have community development corporations in each one of our neighborhoods so that we can train our sons, our daughters, our nieces and nephews to become entrepreneurs, to start their own local small businesses here in Albuquerque. And how can we make it a little bit easier so that they can do that? Thank you.
So the question I have is that I had been inquiring about taking the Alvarado Transportation Center and moving the transportation offices out of city council. Because one is that the county has taken over the Alvarado Square Building, so they have plenty of room for those offices. And making it a mini museum, a visitor center, and arts and crafts people from all over New Mexico. So that we, like, it's kind of similar to Santa Fe where they have that kind of, hey, you bring them downtown, do a pedestrian walkway from the transportation center to the rail yards, and that will spur the growth. But my question is, is, well, before I do my question is, I think it says it all for everyone that owns a business or lives downtown, that Isaac Benton didn't show up today. I have been asking this guy from day one since 2012 to revitalize downtown. So he comes up with the program. Not that we don't love Barellis. And he comes out with the program to revitalize Barellis, but never downtown. And the reason, in my opinion, is because he just doesn't care about downtown. And that's obvious, 'cause he's been to city council for many years. This is not bashing Isaac Benton, but it's the truth. Everybody knows it, that owns a business, anyone that lives here, they just don't put any resources downtown. So the question to the candidates, how, one, that you would agree with the theory of turning the Alvarado Transportation Center into a visitor center, mini museum, and arts and crafts for our, you know, we can have a brewery in there, a coffee house, and really bring that. And then we also have a petition online, it's two-part question. It is to sign the petition so that we can, once, he signed it, so that once the city can really progress and say, "Look, we're gonna promote downtown. We're gonna do a one-year moratorium to do free parking from 11 to 2 so that we can do, open up a visitor center like that, to start bringing people down." Albuquerque is one of the few cities left, major metropolitan cities in the United States that does not have a vibrant downtown. It is time to do it. So the question to the candidates, from day one, what is your plan to revitalize downtown Albuquerque? You did touch base on it, but keeping the Alvarado Transportation Center in mind, who's first?
In terms of my first plan, what to do downtown, we need to do, in general, hold more events down here. We need to do large First Friday events like every other city, major metro area around Albuquerque does. Phoenix has an excellent First Fridays, so does Denver. We need, Albuquerque kinda has a small one, but it's just on and off. Denver, Phoenix consistently have a First Friday and events downtown on a consistent basis. That's how you get businesses here, that's how you get people here who wanna shop here. But it still goes back to that issue, we gotta clean up the crime issue. And in terms of using Alvarado as a museum, I haven't heard of that proposal, but on its face value, I would be for that. Because the offices or the Alvarado Transportation Area is just, anyone who walks down there, it's a haven for petty crimes, the haven for homelessness. So we do need to disperse those offices out and just so it disperses that population away from that area. I mean, on face value, I do agree with turning that into a museum, but I'll have to look into further details.
A few years ago, I had a meeting at P&amp;M in the top floor with some of their CEOs. At that time, I had an idea to get a beautification grant. New Mexico has a city beautification grant. Albuquerque's never taken advantage of it. P&amp;M was at the table, the CEOs and the downtown group, this was probably about four years ago. And we talked about the Alvarado Center. We talked about, at that time, the P&amp;M employees didn't feel safe to even go out and buy lunch at Lindy's. I think that could be number one. Let's approach Alicia Keys, Economic Development Director, and the Beautification Department of the State of New Mexico and say, "Hey, look, downtown's dying. Help us. Let's get the grant writers, let's figure out what grants we can apply for." With the major corporations that are here downtown. We have P&amp;M, we have lots of businesses that could help to support this. And actually, we could do a lot with the state money that we do have. In terms of federal funds, there are federal funds out there, don't fool yourself, we've just never gone after them, 'cause no one in city councils ever even thought about it. You know, in terms of the arts, we don't have anything to bring people to downtown Albuquerque that say that we're the Southwest. Skip just moved. What do we have downtown to show people our artwork? I mean, other than Daniele's across the street, they do have Southwest, and they have local artists, and I applaud them. But they are really, them and the studio, the art studio here. Why can't we instill some more money into the Lita grants, support small businesses? Like La Vue just got a Lita grant. They are now in the Hyatt Building and support nonprofits coming into this area. Thank you.
Thanks, Pete, I really appreciate it. And thanks for that question. I know that, I've seen that proposal. I think, once we stabilize as a community, once we get people into affordable housing, once we start our very first public housing, my see, public health department, and we see the dividends of getting people off the street, getting people into jobs, getting people the wages they need, getting people access to healthcare, then actually we may not have to move that out of the station. But I can tell you this right now, one of the most important things about a vibrant downtown is people need to access downtown. That's super important. And not just Barellis. We need all the surrounding neighborhoods around downtown to be able to access. Wells Park, DNA, South Broadway, San Jose, they all need to be able to access that. That means better public transit into this area, that means better parking situations for this area, and that means better inroads to starting a business. And that means better inroads to starting a business in this area as well. And I'm sorry, Ron, can I ask you to repeat your second question? I know it was a two-parter. So when we talk about those kinds of resources in the very first hundred days, we're talking about working and getting our first public health department started. That can help us not only analyze quickly what some of the really big issues that you're talking about, Ron, but also, how can we quickly and effectively address some of the most pressing issues and emergencies here? Because it's not just about crime and homelessness. It's about how can people get the resources back so their businesses can thrive? Right now, Albuquerque and the city and the state of Mexico is leaving money on the table. I'll give one quick stat. In 2017 alone, New Mexico received $90 billion in federal grant funding. That's a lot of money. Can anyone guess how much the next state of Arkansas got? It was four times as much. Can you imagine what a state like New Mexico could do with $360 billion? And knowing, knowing that Albuquerque would actually see the brunt of that money? That means that we could actually start our health department. That actually means we could actually have a healthy police department. That means that we could actually hire police service aides to, to reduce the capacity so that our police officers can do some of the major work in our city. And that means that we could actually do that within the first hundred days.
So, there's two parts to this. The first was the question about having an actual transportation center with a museum in it, and making it an economic engine and an economic hub for downtown. I fully support that. If we can do $2.3 million for Top Golf and have low-wage paying jobs, then we can have strong local businesses invested into, in our city, that are run by New Mexicans, that are run by local burkeños and burkeñas, and making sure that it reflects the diversity of our population. We can get that done here in Albuquerque. So I fully support that initiative, and I would want to make that a priority in the first hundred days. In addition to that specific priority, I'd want to make sure we establish a residential burglary unit within APD. We're the only city our size without a neighborhood block-by-block street sweep system that collects data and actually collectively manages it to stop future crimes from happening. You know, the, the resources are there, we're not getting it done. My house was broken into three months ago. You know, I, I know what it's like to have something personal happen to you in this city, and then feel that it's not the best opportunity that you could be aiming towards. This has to change. We have to be able to make those structural investments in the first hundred days, alongside having a designated jobs plan and improving the LITA money to be able to invest in a downtown. I am one of the few candidates that actually has that experience in managing LITA money from the state and local level, to be able to push New Mexico businesses to stay here and to be able to grow and thrive here. And that's something I'll bring to this district, that's something I'll bring to downtown. Thank you.
What sort of resource would you dedicate to the Martinez area to try to improve it, especially when it comes to community services?
First of all, I need to correct Robert, we do have a community health department. I can show you where it is. In, in regard to Martinez Town, they have a beautiful park across from the cemetery. They do not have a community center, but they have a meeting room where they have their meetings. If you go down a few blocks west, and you look at Wells Park, we have a big yard, okay? The homeless camp out there all the time. We have a community center where services for drug-addicted youths is after school. Where, again, homeless people camp out. If you have an annual meeting of your, of your board, which I'm on the Wells Park Board, you will walk out and you will find people all over. We have a play yard that has water, a watered park. No kids can ever use it. No parents ever take their kids there. Okay? We have a dog park, just go a little bit further, Coronado Park. A dog park which has been fenced in by the city of Albuquerque, because the homeless decide they camp there. In terms of Martinez Town, they at least have a park. I was just there the other day. There are no homeless in the Martinez Town Park. I believe we should build a community center for this area. I completely agree with Pete. The closest community center is the Barela, is the Duranis Center. Barelas is over here. They have a wonderful senior center on both sides of town, Four Street Senior Center. You should see the Duranis Senior Center if you've never been there. Wells Park downtown, we have nothing. What I'd like to see happen is I will get money, and I will enlarge the Wells Park Community Center, open it up to the downtown area, because we're just a few blocks away, make senior, senior citizen programs and after-school programs, because I went there to kindergarten, okay? I'm that old. Tony Pino and I went to kindergarten, when they had a kindergarten. Let's give some money to Wells Park and downtown, and let's share it. The other thing I want to do with that empty lot that the city wants to make a park, a swimming pool. I think that's something we lack as a community in this area, and I think people downtown and in Wells Park would welcome a place to go swim. Thank you.
Let's see if we can keep your answers to one minute, so we can get more questions in.
And before we do that, I, I do have to mention that Lindy's Diner, since 1929, they do have a full menu. If you're hungry, want some appetizers, please do so in, in ordering. The menu is now open. They do also serve liquid refreshments and liquid spirits here as well, right? They have a great hemp beer here, that is incredible. So, and also, the voter registration people are here in the center table. If you know, if you have, if you need to register both, thanks to the Burnley County Clerk, Linda Stover, that they're here today. And again, thanks to Pete Donelli and Way Beyond Social Jimmy. And the next one is...
Thanks for that question. And so, Martinez Town has been neglected over many, 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 many years. I can tell you right now, that park that Connie talked about, it took them 60 years to renovate that park. Sixty. I live in Wells Park, and I know that our parks are getting some really good attention, but I know Martinez Town has been systemically ignored for many years. And so for me, it's not just about getting a community center in Martinez Town, it's planning with all of our neighborhoods and coordinating with all of our neighborhoods to make sure that we're going after the right capital outlay and investments, so that neighborhood can get a community center. They can work on developing a community development corporation. They can work on getting more investments back to the neighborhood, and work on developing that's community-driven and not necessarily from the outside.
So the question relates to Martinez Town and whether or not we can invest real-time dollars for a robust community center. And this is something really important, because when I'm knocking doors, I'm, I'm out on Edith, right? And I'm talking one-on-one to people, and the first three things they ask me is, can you help out with our park? And if you can, what, what can you do when it comes to better response time within APD? And I'm going to make a statement here, because I don't think you should have to, have to reach out to the county or state police for help in your own city. I think you should have a staffing level and a strong recruitment program that pulls from historic neighborhoods that know the area. And for that, I'm one of the few candidates with a recruitment plan, where we offer student loan forgiveness through a streamlined process for people going into APD in fire. Because they know their community. They live in their community, they grew up in their community. That means something, that's something powerful. For this specific issue, for the parks and the community center, this is where we need to leverage our Parks Department and our Cultural Department, our Cultural Services Department, together as one, to be able to build out a reflective park that meets the community needs, that doesn't have needles, that doesn't have waste, and has consistent bike patrol units. Thank you. In terms of the community center, well, first off, we have to stop just ignoring Martinez Town. In general, Martinez Town kind of gets thrown under the bus for a lot of issues. I know a lot of residents in the area didn't really approve of the NBC Universal project, and the city still pushes projects forward. So, first off, we have to stop ignoring the will of the people in that area. And second, we, we need to listen to the needs of that area. Law enforcement does have to have better response times, and I do agree that it is absolutely embarrassing that I have to say, hey, constituents, you should try and reach out to another agency, because APD doesn't have the response time. But I do find that extremely embarrassing, but that, that's just the nature of the game right now. But in terms of the community center, if there's funding for there, I, I don't see any issue with it. But we have to make sure it's, the community wants it, everywhere, everyone in the area wants it, and they should have a big community input on what happens with the park and the community center in general. Thank you.
What are the candidates positioned on the ART bus project? Should it be completed, or should we start all over?
I think, when it comes to the ART bus, we have this tremendous opportunity right now. What happened with that project was that all of you were left out of the decision-making of the process, and it was shoved down our throats. And we are paying for it right now, for it to not run. And the fact that small businesses are closed in that time, and Nob Hill here in downtown, even West Central, that's a shame, and it's an indictment of how we do business in our city. So now, now is the opportunity to come back to you, to ask this question. What does good public transit in our city look like? And how, how can we improve it? And how does it come from you, so you can use public transit and access, vitalize downtown, vibrant downtown, and help us grow economically? Thank you.
So my position on ART is straightforward. We were locked out since the beginning on this specific decision. It did not, did not include the community input that people thought it was supposed to. We voted on the basis of saying that we're going to have an environmental-friendly, commuter-heavy, transit-based plan. But here's the thing, we voted on buses that did not pass a federal inspection safety standard. We didn't check the hood. We didn't check underneath the hood. We didn't look to see if the technology we're voting on actually existed. It didn't. And then when we tried to shift money away from public safety into this, we took it away from the communities that were calling for that kind of help that we're experiencing right now in real time. We're just having now a bond issue that's going forward for a homelessness shelter. Right? That's $14 million. ART costs upwards of $20 million plus. I'm asking you where our priorities were, and it wasn't with the community. That's where you need to vote. That's how we get it done. The change happens in leadership. ART, or as I call it, FART, the Failed Albuquerque Rapid Transit Project, that was a complete and utter disaster. That was just poor government on both sides. You had a Republican mayor and a Democrat city council go against the will of the people, which was completely and utterly wrong. My position on ART is if it's not, if it's losing as much money as our current bus system is now, then we have to scrap it. I'm pretty sure if we left that decision up to voters, they would, they would probably vote to scrap that, to scrap that project. Thank you.
Okay. As far as the ART, I got pulled over by a policeman the other day when I was going to the barber shop on the west side of Central, okay? Next to Ripe. Okay? Number one, no tickets. Raise your hand if you want, no tickets. No tickets for crossing that stupid double line. No tickets for making a U-turn in a place you're not supposed to make it. Because first of all, there aren't enough signs to tell you where you're not supposed to make the turn. And APD is already handing out little cards. Talk about salt in the wound. We have to make this thing work. The way we can make it work is by getting the businesses that could potentially, like U&amp;M, potentially students could ride that bus. Potentially people other than just a few handful and homeless people getting bus passes from St. Martin's could ride that bus, and we could support the bus. But no tickets. The other thing I want to say for downtown, no meters. No meters, at all. If you want people to come to the grocery store, then don't charge them to park at a meter. I got a $20 ticket last time I went to Rob's meeting. I don't want any tickets. When I grew up here, we had sideways parking. No tickets. No meters. Let's support this place, and let's get the bus running. And let's get incentives for Sandia Labs and anybody else who could use that bus coming from the west side, coming into U&amp;M, continuing on. And let's get commuter buses that can meet the ART to take them up to Sandia Labs. Let's get a true transportation system. Thank you.
One of the big priorities of the previous administration, which was pushed by the current city council, was the ABC Comprehensive Plan. I forget what the term is now used, what they call it. Oh, the Comprehensive Plan. The Integrated Comprehensive Plan. Do you feel they went too far in abolishing a lot of these, basically, sector development plans? And do you feel there's enough safeguards in there to help the neighborhoods? And if not, what would you do to change that?
So for the IDO, I feel that there's so many things packed into this, because the document size is just, you know, the, the size of this roof, pretty much. The parts that I, that stick out to me the most are three key, three key issues. One, some businesses woke up and found out they were in violation of the new rules. You know, they, they had to do a quick change and be like, oh, well, maybe I don't, I shouldn't put tables on the sidewalk after all, maybe I have to get a specialized permit for that now. Government shouldn't be a surprise you wake up to, it should be an effective partner. It should be something that's user-friendly. And that's what the IDO has to be. People need to be able to check in on projects and see what their zoning status is in real time, and have that capability through their phones. We live in a digital renaissance, but we don't use it for public services. When it comes to public documents, when it comes to notice, when it comes to making things more user-friendly and accessible, we're failing. And people need to be part of this conversation. That's why the amendment process is going to be so huge in part of that. It should be both bilingual, it should be able to be effective not just in 60 days, but a 90-day notice. These are parts that protect people's rights and keep the integrity of our neighborhood intact. The new IDO plan is extremely huge and cumbersome. There's some really good things in there, and there's some really bad things. But in general, it was passed in a very terrible, not, I would say, a terrible way. It was thrown on, and like you said, there was people that didn't know they were in compliance. But going forward, we need to take the, take the good things out of it, and we, we really need to listen to businesses when it comes to the bad things. And we really need to listen to the needs of the community when it comes to changing an issue in that. But thank you.
Can you please raise your hand if you've ever tried to read the IDO? Were you able? I couldn't. It's all legalese. I mean, there's other cities, go to Boise, Idaho's website. You can see that they have made that user-friendly, it's online. If you go to the IDO here, I can't read it, I'm sorry. But one thing I see in the city of Albuquerque is the only one who gets notified for any major projects is the neighborhood associations. Do the businesses get notified of any major projects in the city of Albuquerque? Raise your hand if you've ever gotten a notification and you own a business. I want that changed. And I would like to see public notification through signage, on the site, wherever something is being proposed. And notification for many meetings with the businesses. They have to have, they have the stake in the game, and they are being shut out. Again, the only notification goes to neighborhood associations, and I think that has to change. In terms of salvaging the Fourth Street Corridor Plan, we need to dig down and see where we went wrong. Because if you see that building over by St. Teresa's Church, you know we went south. So thank you.
I'm really glad we asked this question. I was one of the activists and organizers for the Historic Neighborhoods Alliance, who posed the IDO for the last three and a half years. And some stats around the Integrated Development Ordinance and the Comprehensive Plan. Through five months of planning meetings with the city planning department, with transit and with economic development, there were only 2,400 participants at those meetings. That is not the kind of representation we need from our communities, from our business owners, from our community stakeholders at a large project like that, which at a minimum should have been two to three years. A worse stat about that 2,400 is that 700 people were duplicates, triplicates, people from the city in economic development and transit. That's not the kind of representation. So for me, when it comes to representing the interest of our community, we need to start standing up our Office of Neighborhood Coordination and building more staffers in its capacity to reach out to our communities, so that we can understand proactively what it is that you need from our city, so that we can do much better in terms of engaging you and getting you the business, getting you the development you need, and talking about those sector development plans, which people worked on for 20 years at times, to get them started so their communities could thrive. Thank you so much.
We have a couple of questions, and the guy didn't want to write it out because he's got surgery on his hands or something, but I'm going to add and bring the mic back here. The closer you talk to the mic, the more that we can hear you.
Good afternoon. My name is Dr. David Bear Shilt. I serve as a Senior Development Director for the Gathering of Nations. I'm a Shina Rappo and Kawa tribal member, and I'm also a resident from here in downtown. And I've listened to all the candidates and what the questions have been said, and I've heard about all of your plans with regards to everything in this, in the district which we represent now, which is the largest district in the city council portion of, of this, of the city. But I really believe, because I live downtown, I, I want to hear what your plan is with regards to being in the largest district in city council, what you know about Native American issues? Because we have a Native American school here in this particular district, and we have the largest number of Native American voters that are in this district. And my second question for you to ask is, what is your real plan for downtown? Because what, what we're looking at now is a big homelessness issue, and I have heard every last one of you dance around your plan. I want to hear your plan. I want to hear what you have to do with regards to revitalization in downtown Albuquerque, because it is a problem here in downtown. Not just the homelessness, but we have people from all over, and it is, it is one of the most prestigious areas, and everyone ignores this. And so I want to hear that plan about your partnership with Native country, and I also want to hear about your partnership with regards to your plan for, really, for downtown Albuquerque.
Hello. Thank you for your question. When it comes to Native American issues, be honest, I don't know too much. But my social media page is always open. Message me. I usually respond within a day. And if not, usually within 20 minutes. So reach out to me. Give me all the issues you want. I'm willing to sit down and talk. That's always an option. And I always enjoy talking and having conversations with constituents. Second issue is the homeless issue. Like you mentioned, I don't think I've danced around that issue, but when it comes down to it, we have to crack down on those low-level crimes. We have to establish a plan to attack that homeless issue kind of how Rudy Giuliani did in New York in that time. And that is arrest for those low-level crimes and crack down on those issues and crack down on those issues hard. Arrests for drug possession, drug use, vandalism, all the crimes that McClendon Settlement says they can't. The issue, why they don't arrest now is because of McClendon Settlement. They don't want to get sued and face lawsuits. So we have to get rid of that McClendon Settlement in order to crack down on that issue. So, and we have to put more forward, more public, what was it, public order ordinances handling the homeless issue. So again, crack down on those low-level crimes, kind of like state police did, and they had great success. Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Brescher. You're a former fellow candidate, and I did try to email you. And I do want to know about the issues affecting the native population. And I want to tell you, I was the only person in the civic center three weeks ago when there was an Indian powwow there. Seriously, this was during the time of the fair when we had Indian Day, okay? I was walking downtown. I see a big crowd. I go over there. They asked me to talk, and I was very humbled. Because the reason that they had that meeting in the civic center was about recovery. Recovery in the native population from drug abuse is a huge problem. And I address that by saying, let's team together. Pete Tanelli did a blog today talking about how Susanna closed 15 mental health facilities in the state of New Mexico. Not only the mental health facilities are lacking, but the long-term residential treatment centers to help natives and anyone across any economic base to get help for their loved one here in the city of Albuquerque. You'd be hard-pressed to find an open bed at Brothers of the Good Shepherd or any of the other facilities. And I applaud you for speaking out about it because it is a huge problem in the native population. And I'd like to see the state working with the federal government, with Deb Haaland's office. And let's get a handle on this drug problem here in New Mexico. Thank you.
Dr. Bearishild, thank you for your question. I think when we ask about how can we address native issues more carefully or more respectfully, we also have to acknowledge the fact that right now, we're standing on indigenous land. And when you talk about indigenous land, we have to talk about tribal sovereignty. And that tribal sovereignty has to be able to interact respectfully, not respectfully. We have to, as a city, to interact respectfully with tribal sovereignty. That means how do we engage our urban Indian population? And then how do we engage and support the folks that are doing all the development over there by the Indian Pueblo Cultural Center? And what's going on with the economic development there? And I think we can do more to support the development that's going on in that property. When you talk about our real plan, the first thing we're going to do is start our public health department. That means that we need to be able to understand public health frameworks and adapt those throughout all of our policies throughout our city so that we can address that homeless problem that you're talking about. We need to get homeless folks off the street and into housing as quickly as possible. I'm the only candidate who has direct experience getting people to stand back up on their feet into permanent housing and surrounding them with case management services, which we need to build the capacity of right now, not just affordable housing, so they can succeed and be healthier in our city. Thank you, Dr. Bearishild, for your service to the Gathering of Nations. And I'm honored with your question. Two direct points. My direct experience on any issues of indigenous rights and the struggles that we see day in and day out in our city and throughout the state, quite frankly. I'm the only candidate to be endorsed by DNA Equality. And I sought that endorsement out directly because my economic development plan wants to work together with tribes directly, one-on-one, to be able to create not only an accelerator program within the arts, but within every sector of development that we try to say we're the best in. But clearly, the data shows the opposite. We need to be able to have a true partnership between the city governments, the county governments, and within the tribes. And I'm not just talking like it would be nice to sit down and talk about. I'm talking about forged material over economic development plans that are a shared job strategy. We talk a lot about creating jobs. Nobody really explains how to get there. I'm the candidate that is running as a nerd because I know how to get there. I know how to get to that 5,000-job number, and it's going to be in partnership with the tribes here. That is my commitment, and that is my experience. And I hope to be able to follow through on that and work with you closely.
Yes, my name is Peter Horn. I live a couple of blocks away at Alvarado Apartments. I moved here from Chicago four years ago. And one thing that I was noticing is our little neighborhood here, between First and Eighth on a Central Avenue, is it doesn't seem like there's any plan for it. Like, I've always lived in cities where there was a downtown planning commission. There was some rhyme or reason to your main street, the street that everybody sees. The tourists see this, the business people, people who live in the community see it. And in my apartment building, this is the honest truth. There are people who move in or have been there who will not walk on Central between First and Eighth during the day because they perceive it as being dangerous. There's no business that they want to go visit because there's no place to buy shoes, there's no place to buy clothes. Gizmo is closing, and it never has been open much anyway. They basically cater to police uniforms and fire uniforms, and he's moving to Old Town to take care of that. So that place is closing. There's no other retail. There are bars that really don't serve the community, such as Cake, Lotus, which is a block away, now called Tetra. This one here, what is it called? Posh. And then you've also got FX, which is not bad, but they are open late at night. They're not open during the day. They don't serve the community. So the question is, is we've got all this business, like Cake, that just opened without anybody being told they were going to open, which brings business late on Saturday night. Why is there no business on First and Eighth, besides Lindy's and a couple others, that's serving the community? Where's the retail? Where's the stores? Where's maybe bars for some people over 35, besides Sister and Anodyne or maybe a little bit Library, that serve the community? We've got business here like Cake, which has 21-year-olds from other neighborhoods taking up a lot of space. But meanwhile, if you live downtown, there's no place to go during the day. No wonder nobody walks down here between First and Eighth during the day. Okay, the question is, what are you doing? What is the plan for Central Avenue? What is the plan to follow up on this gentleman here for downtown? I'd like that answer. Thank you.
In order to truly bring back businesses, when I grew up here, there was a shoe stopper store. It was right here. It's called Hales. There was a JCPenney where my grandmother was a manager. There was a Woolworths over here, a five-and-time, a big one, okay? At one time, Albuquerque was a thriving downtown. What has happened over the years? Over the years, people have developed Uptown, Windrock, Coronado. There's no impetus for people to shop here. But I think the one thing that could bring people here that could help us disdain the businesses that are here, like I said, that market on Saturdays, you know that is an event. People come here from all over to go to that market. It's really one of the only ones in the city. I'm saying, let's put that market down Central. Let's have more events immediately down Central Avenue to let people know we're here. Let's get information out to the business sector about LIDA grants and how they can get funding from the city to open a small business. And then let's support them by truly bringing a substation with mandated police force here 24/7. We need at least two officers, I think, in this whole corridor 24/7, seven days a week, to support everyone down here. Thank you.
Thank you for that question. I was actually out walking with my wife last Friday night, and we were saying to ourselves, we had this really great dinner, and we couldn't find a place to just get dessert. And for me, being able to walk downtown from First and Eighth Street means exactly what you just said. We need to have retail here. We need to attract people so they can live here. And we need to attract people so they can work here. To be able to do that, we need to be able to create the kind of financial infrastructure where businesses can thrive here. And that's what I'm talking about when it comes to making Albuquerque the number-one city for small businesses. That means we can actually do that for downtown. It means that, one, we have to make sure that our local folks can start a business more easily. Two, we have to create the kind of funding and financial infrastructure so that people have access to capital so that not only do they survive, but they thrive and they keep their families here so they can actually make minimum wage happen and increase it year to year rather than every five. And three, we need to make sure that people have access to our downtown so they have public transit and more effective systems to get us here from these surrounding neighborhoods that want to claim downtown as their own. Right. So has anybody heard of a place called Boiler Monkey? No? Yeah. It just closed. It was right down the shop over here. It was one of my favorite places to go for a quick bite, for coffee, or for that dessert. And they had killer pie. I won't tell you that much. Pecan pie right here. And we do here at Lindy's. Right on. Here's how we get this done. Because we can keep talking all day about the needs and what should have been done and all that. The how, that's where I come in. 5,000 graduates being recruited into our local economy into downtown, 22 businesses having direct access to LIDA money and favorable financial conditions where they could start businesses in our vacant buildings with a strike force from the city government that has a specific rent control on those specific buildings. But we infuse that with local economic development money and work with both our realtors and building owners to make sure that we can make up the difference. And that's how we get it done in real time. That's something that we have to be prioritizing. We can keep talking about the lack of the thing being there, but the plan is going to be everything. That's how you get creative arts building on each side of the streets we have here. That's how you make sure that the chemo doesn't end up needing to replace their windows every two weeks. That's how you make sure you get something that lasts. Thank you.
First off, I'll be straight up honest with your question about why no one moves here, why it's been neglected. Well, first off, no one wants to move here because the crime issue is terrible. I mean, and given the circumstances of the crime issue, the amount that people charge to rent spaces here doesn't coincide with how bad the crime area is. I mean, no one's going to open up a business here and pay that high a price as if the crime rate is extremely high. That's the honest question. And businesses aren't going to come down here if they're going to get broken into. And in general, the downtown area, it always seems to be used as a political pawn. Like I said earlier, we've had mayors, both parties, go back and forth saying that they're going to develop this area. But they always seem to use it as a political pawn to get reelected. Bottom line, we need to take care of the crime issue. And in general, that will allow businesses, that will allow business owners to want to move to downtown. That will also give business owners a reason to come here and say, hey, the area's cleaned up, crime's down. I'll pay a little higher price for rent to get more people to be more visible out there in the public. But bottom line, we have to get a handle on the crime and homeless issue down here for businesses and people who want to come down here.
So my question is, how are you going to include the local neighborhoods and residents? And how best should we develop downtown so that their needs as consumers and neighbors are being met as well?
That's a really excellent question, Nancy. I really appreciate that. I think that hits on some of the things I've been mentioning today. Downtown is the jewel of our city. We need a vibrant downtown that can succeed. And we need leadership who can see how great downtown can and will be. And when we talk about that, we also need to talk about, one, access. People need to be able to get to downtown through public transit, which means we have to go back to you and say, what is a really great way that we can access our downtown through public transit? And what is a really great public transit for you? North-south routes, east, more routes, commuter routes that are getting to and from the center of the city. Two, we need to improve and reprioritize how we get small businesses and attract them to come here so that people can work and live downtown. And three, we need to look at having, again, our public health department because that will help us understand and bring back to our community and stand up how our community and our business owners can be more involved rather than being less and being told, this is what's good for you. That means that we have to stand up our Office of Neighborhood Coordination in that process so that we're, one, coming to our neighborhoods, coming to your houses, knocking on your doors, and getting there more than just when we need a vote. We need to ask you what it is your issues are in our neighborhoods, what it is your concerns are, what are your business development ideas? Because those ideas, I can't do it alone. We need you at the table helping us those ideas happen in our city. Thank you. So the question you asked was how we include our neighborhoods to make sure that it works for them when it comes to the businesses being developed here downtown. Well, first step is to have somebody with the experience of having done them. I'd be the only economist on city council. I work directly with family-owned businesses, one-on-one, to connect them to LIDA funds and make it about the community rather than just have, you know, just somebody else make the entire decisions. I think that's what we need. I think we need that kind of leadership. The other part is making sure we build out, what I was mentioning before, that Creative Arts Accelerator, which is connected to the neighborhood, which immediately is something people look for and look for a place to be at and say, hey, I'm going to try out that idea. I can go get not only my business coaching there, but help with my accounting on that side of that project that I'm working with for the last three neighborhoods or for the last three blocks I'm working on in Varelas. They need to have those accessibility points very present and open. And it has to be shown by somebody who has that kind of experience. I'm a proud graduate of U and M Law as well. My focus was environmental law. These businesses have to be able to grow while making sure our community stays together.
Hello. It goes back to the how, but my position's probably been done to death. But we have to get rid of the crime issue to incentivize businesses to come down here. That's bottom line, the top priority. If there's homeless people, people begging for money when you're walking down here, no one's going to want to come down. We have to get a handle on that issue immediately so businesses and people from outside this area want to open up a business. And also, if local residents, especially so they can open up a business, local residents in there know this issue or know this area more deeply than people from the outside, and they know how bad this area is when it comes to crime and when it comes to homelessness, and they know how often businesses come and leave. So bottom line, we have to make it easier for people to open up businesses here. And in terms of listening to residents, listen to residents on what they want, what kind of businesses they want here in this area, the city should be putting it out there, hey, the citizens in this area want this type of business here. Anyone willing to move here? Thank you.
But we have to do a shout-out. Is Mr. Maddox still here? Mr. Maddox, Paul Silverman. Look at the Imperial Building. He tried retail on the bottom base. Was that the kind of retail the neighborhood wanted? Look at Rob and Kelly. You know, they invested big time in Silver Street Market. Are the people who live downtown supporting it? That's my question. Because these people, give them a shout-out. The Garcia's just bought First Plaza. David Baker, I forget his last name, his now slayman's Baker, just built the Humble Coffee Shop. Is anybody going to Humble Coffee Shop to get their awesome pastry and their coffee? Because when you ask, how can the neighborhoods engage? You can engage by coming down here and supporting the businesses that are putting their all into this downtown. That's one thing. The other thing is, let's get Mr. Maddox, Paul Silverman, and all the people who own these major buildings and see if we can't lower the rent so that people that want to open a small business in the Gizmo Building or the Kraske Building with the broken glass can actually open a sustainable small business. Those are things I'd like to engage with. The property owners are the base. They're the ones who charge the lease. Let's talk with them and see how we can engage the neighborhood and what you want to see here. Thank you.
As I announced, I have a blog, www.petanelli.com. I was born and raised in Albuquerque. I went to St. Mary's Grade School. I graduated from Del Norte High, and I've seen this entire city grow over my 67 years of living here. My blog has a short history of Albuquerque from 1952 until the present, and a short history of downtown Albuquerque and a short history of uptown Albuquerque. And it talks about exactly all this development, what used to be here and how it migrated to Northeast Heights. So I'd like to encourage you to take a look at the blog and maybe look those up. The other, the third story is on the Barellis Redevelopment Project. And it talks about what they're trying to do to the Barellis area. So with that in mind, please, www.petanelli.com. Take a look at it. I'd appreciate it. I'm going to go on now to ask some other questions. There's some big issues that are still pending in Albuquerque. The one issue is, you, all four of you said that we have dramatic increases in crime, that we need more police officers. But the elephant in the room, so to speak, is the fact that we have a Department of Justice consent decree. We've been under this consent decree now for five years. The current mayor is talking about an $88 million investment to grow and develop the department to 1,200 police officers. We are now at 1,000 police officers. The problem is, crime is not coming down. So the first question is, what is your feelings about the Department of Justice consent decree? And number two, do you actually have a plan to try to address crime and bring down the various crime in the area and not just adding more cops? So again, two-part question. Your position on the Department of Justice, and the second position is, what is your plan to bring down crime?
I attended a seminar for the Department of Justice about six months ago, it was being held in the Convention Center. Everybody who's anybody was there. I found out that we're in year three. We have hired an expert consultant to help us to comply with all those issues they said we were not in compliance with. I want to know, why are we paying someone? What is the A P D doing to speed up this process? But I tend to disagree with Pete in that we do have ordinances that can protect us as citizens. We don't need to be vandalized. We don't need to have robberies. We don't need to be stabbed with no consequences. And that all comes down to, who's representing us in City Hall? We have 30 attorneys representing the city. The ACLU is coming down on our behinds about panhandling, and all of this stuff is leading into lawsuits like crazy to the city. That needs to stop. On the other handle of, what was your other question? Sorry.
What's your position on the DOJ and what's your specific plan to bring back down?
To bring down crime, does anybody know that we only have less than 10 narcotics agents in the whole of A P D? The biggest factor to me is crime is associated with drugs. Why aren't we cracking down on drug dealers? When's the last time you heard of a major drug deal crackdown in Albuquerque? Every single major crime and minor crime is mostly 99.9% associated with drug use. Why is A P D not cracking down on the drug dealers? That's my question.
So I'm glad you asked this question about the DOJ. I support the consent decree. I think it's one of those things where we need a healthy police force. We need a police force that is trained and ready to go to address the newer, newer issues that are not getting simpler in our community. That means they need training. That means they need training in harm reduction and desolation and trauma-informed care. And that means they need to be leaders in our community, which we believe that they are. We want a healthy police force. When we talk about solving crime, we need to talk about solving crime more systemically rather than throwing more police officers at them, rather than just locking more people up. Those are not solving the issue. That's why we need a public health department. We need to look at all the roots underneath why crime exists, why people have mental health issues, why people have substance abuse issues, why people are poor. How did they become poor in the first place? And to ask this question, what is a criminal before they become a criminal? They're our brothers, our sisters, our mothers, our fathers, our aunts, our uncles. They are people just like me and you. And I'm going to tell you a really funny story really quick. I have a friend of mine who had their house robbed by a neighbor because they were trying to cover $50 in rent. That's all they were before, a neighbor. We have to make sure that people are not falling and continue falling so they can stand back up, so that we can have a healthier city where people can be successful.
So on the issue of the DOJ, this is really important and something that we have to pay close attention to as a city. We mentioned the surge in crime we have. We have more violent crime this year than the previous year. I believe we're at 62 or 63 homicides this year. Last year, it was 51 or 52. I mean, we only have 10 detectives in our police department that handle homicide investigations. Think about that, having to live through that and then going through that trauma and not having that closure or confidence that something might not come through for you. That's really important. The CASA agreement that we're experiencing right now for Albuquerque and in partnership with the DOJ requires specific training. My question was, why wasn't that training there to begin with? Why wasn't that kind of investment done by prior city councils? I've heard a claim that, you know, the recruitment standards were dropped and the training levels were dropped, and that's why we got this increase in police and then a decrease in police. If people knew that, why didn't they act to make better decisions for our police officers going into the field? The other part is, I want to have behavioral health specialists and addiction specialists go into our community rather than have police respond to Down and Out or fire respond to Down and Out. That makes sure we don't criminalize homelessness or behavioral health or addiction, but lifts it up in a community way.
DOJ agreement to me is a, was a lack of will between the mayor and the council to address the issue, and they called, as I said, they said, they asked mommy and daddy for help, and they didn't like the answer or the results of that. So, but that was all, on that issue, that was just, no one wanted to address the issues with A P D. But then again, in my opinion, the CASA agreement went way too far in restricting what A P D can and can't do. It's completely ridiculous. The DA cleared A P D of all the shootings, and then the DOJ came back and said that they were unjustified by a preponderance when they were completely cleared with the DA. That is completely ridiculous. Because of that, we need to either hurry up and become compliant with the DOJ, we need to stop dragging our feet, or we need to bite the bullet, take it to court, and get out of it. Those are the two options. We also need to, the DOJ has also cost us officers who could be used other ways. There are 10 detectives in A P D's homicide unit. There are near 70 detectives in A P D's unit that has to investigate other officers. There's, that's 70 detectives investigating their own officers for issues. 10 detectives in the homicide unit. That's a major, major problem right there. And if we get out of the agreement, that's, we can use those officers to, in other areas, homicide, we can also use them in burglary because A P D does not have a full-time burglary unit. Thank you.
Okay, now, as we get ready to start winding this down, I really want to make emphasis again for the Burnley County Clerk. Even if you registered one person, that was good. If you registered zero, you being here was really appreciated. So make sure you tell our dear Linda Stover that we said thank you. And you're really welcome to order from this delicious menu, by the way, from Lindy's, okay? We do have the door prizes scheduled to give away, and that includes a dinner ticket from Tucano's, one from Lindy's Diner. We also have a movie ticket, and we are going to give those away. So if you didn't get a coupon, Monique will take care of that. And Monique actually has a question for us. And before we do that, we'll ask your question, and then the legalization of marijuana question will be just, how do you feel about it? After her question, then we'll just keep rolling, and we'll wrap it up by four o'clock.
Okay, so I know you guys touched on the art project a little bit. Somebody said, scrap it altogether, maybe do different things for it. What about environmental issues? Something like electrical trolleys, they are better for the environment, they, it's cheaper to run electrical trolleys? And I just want to know where your stance is on the environment. We haven't touched on that at all. What about banning plastics, maybe straws? Be the forerunner instead of always being behind here in New Mexico, especially in the downtown area? So I just want to know where you stand with that.
Great, so I love this question, actually. So my technical training, not only in being an economist, I graduated from the University of New Mexico School of Law. My focus was environmental law and constitutional rights. So the environment is a huge part of any economic development plan and any kind of build-out that we're talking about for a city has to be at the core of it. I'm one of the few candidates with a carbon reduction plan. My plan would involve a 75% carbon reduction through building out carbon capture tower technologies from existing infrastructure that we have. That way, we actually get the real results of fighting climate change as opposed to the promised results of, you know, we're going to order some buses and it might, it might help, and then finding out that those buses weren't electrical, we're going to actually now order diesel. And the technology that we voted on didn't exist. Those things matter. Having the environment matters. And a quick point on the business development when it comes to the environment down here, I would like to create the downtown business corridor. And that would be an economic zone where we cover everything from zoning to rent to make it favorable towards local-owned businesses to be able to build back up. And that's going to take a technical skill and leadership, and I'm bringing those kind of skills to the city council. Thank you.
I will agree with you on the art initially, that that does make sense. It should have been a trolley system. I mean, why they decided to patch mail this thing together is, I, I, I can't, only God knows why they decided to do it this way. Originally, it should, it makes sense, there should have been a trolley system up and down central, and it would have been cheaper, it would have been more environmentally friendly. And that's the way it should have originally gone. In terms of environmental issues, we need to do more education on recycling. I remember when I was young, growing up, they always enforced recycling in schools. We saw commercials for recycling.
Can I say recycling isn't what we think it is anymore? If, you know, actually, nothing is even being recycled anymore? China was the one doing it before, they're not taking it anymore? So what can we do to maybe start programs here? We have homeless people that could be recycling bottles like they do in California, make some money doing that.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We do have, Michigan has a very good program on that. They get, I think, five cents per bottle, and that is something that does need to be done here. But what I got with with education is, you don't really see that anymore, and you don't think about it. When I was a kid, I always used to think about it just because it was always in front of you, it was always means, hey, recycle. Now I'm like, since it's not in front of me, sadly, I'm like, I forget about it. But in terms of incentive programs, we do need to do more incentive programs like the, like I said, Michigan has an excellent program like that. I brought that up in the last forum in Duranis, that we just need to do more incentive programs like that. Thank you.
Maybe you don't know, but the businesses are kicking into recycling. How many of you have seen those really big blue and yellow bins? That's something the city has done positively because a lot of the businesses selected to have that big recycling bin. You can find one on Second and McKnight down here. Most all the businesses now have adapted a large recycling bin, which you can take all your stuff. And I think that helps because otherwise, we have to have those special blue bins and a special timeframe, a special truck, and all of that. The second question is, what was the second question about? Sorry. Recycling, okay, that's number one. But the other thing is, the air pollution. How many of you actually have ever stepped foot on a bus? How many of you would ever even consider it? How many of you would use a commuter bus to go to work if you could, if we had them? So that's the real question mark. We talk about, let's clean up the air, but how many of us would actually give up our cars?
Oh, I thought you were talking about environment.
I'm talking about, yeah, pollution and all of that. That all goes hand in hand. I think we should have commuter buses. We don't have a bus right now that goes past Cuiegos on Rio Grande. Sandia Labs does have one commuter bus, but I think that's something we need to focus on is getting out of our cars. Thank you.
Thanks for your wonderful question. When it comes to environment, we have to talk about systemic issues. We have to go way beyond just economics. We have to talk about environmental justice as well. Right down the street is San Jose, they have one of the worst polluting industries of all time, and the kids down there suffer from so much asthma, and the adults actually live 22 years less than the folks who live in the Heights. But when we talk about that, when we talk about environment and economy, we have to talk about the Green New Deal. We talk about how we bring that to our city so that, one, we can do it with, by creating more tax incentives for local small businesses to create green and sustainable practices. Two, we need to create incentives for larger and clean industries to come to our town so that they can employ, employ our university kids, our high school kids, so that we are becoming the leader of that industry, not only in our country, but around the globe as well. And I want to talk about the last thing, which is, we can actually set our sights in becoming the capital of renewable energy in our, in our state, in our country, and across the planet. That's what I have to say about it. Thank you.
Three major issues that I'm hoping you're going to be able to respond to very quickly because we're going to have to wind this down. What is your position on whether or not Albuquerque should be a sanctuary city? Number two, what is your position on gun control? The council that sits there now is one of three sponsors of some gun control legislation. And the third issue is, what's your position on legalization of marijuana?
Now, so we can streamline that, let's take the first question, have you guys all answer it real quick, and then the second question, okay? Who's first?
Sanctuary city.
Sanctuary city. I hate that issue because everyone's on one side or the other. In general, we shouldn't be broadcasting that we are a sanctuary city, but I don't think we should be going and using Joe Arpaio-style tactics, actually asking everyone for their papers. That's a waste of time, and all that's going to happen is ICE is going to be like, if they do catch people, get in line. They're just going to tell A P D, get in line with every other police department. But we shouldn't be advocating for it, but we shouldn't be doing Joe Arpaio-style tactics. I mean, it's a very middle-of-the-road issue, but people get pissed off on, oh, you're in one camp, you're in one not, so I hate that issue.
How many of you would like a say whether we are a sanctuary city or not? Raise your hand if you want a say in that. You mean you don't want a say? Seriously? Right now, city council tells us everything we're going to do, either that or Tim Keller. Why don't we have votes on these major issues? Why don't you get to have a say? Why don't I get to have a say? That's what I want to see. If we really do want to, you know, we are a status of sanctuary city. Where are the voters in all this? What do you have to say? That's what I'd like to do.
So I'm a Filipino immigrant. I came to the United States because we wanted a better life as immigrants. And when we, when we left the Philippines in 1983, it was just months before the revolution. And if you know about what happened in the Philippines back then, you know that so many people disappeared, there was genocide, and it was an unstable country. And we found a good life here in America. And so for me, when we talk about having a sanctuary city, it means that we are upholding that belief that America is still one of the greatest countries of all time. And that, instead of arguing about whether or not we're a sanctuary city or not, why don't we say this? Welcome. Welcome and be part of one of the greatest countries of all time.
So right now, we have what's known as an immigrant-friendly status. That's the current definition that we've been hearing from, not only from City Hall, but different nonprofit actors. This is important because either we're the land of the free and the home of the brave or we're not. Truly, either we live our ideals or we don't. This country is forged by many. Out of many, we are one. That's literally our motto. We are immigrant-friendly by design, and we need to continue to be. Immigrants create small businesses faster than non-immigrants. There are lower crime statistics for immigrants than there are for native-born Americans. So when you hear this information, I want you to make sure you always know that we are a city built by, shared by, and made by inclusive policies like immigrant-friendly city.
The second question was on gun control. There are three pieces of legislation pending, sponsored by one particular city councillor. What's your position on those gun control restrictions?
In terms of that, again, how many of you would like to have a say on that? Or do you want Pat Davis and Isaac Benton to tell you whether you can have your gun or not? Seriously, I think any major decision that affects the taxpayers needs to go out for a vote, plain and simple. I don't want Ike Benton telling me that my 89-year-old father can't carry a gun because we live in a dangerous area, okay? Even just someone seeing it prevents crime. So, you know, I'm not saying guns are good, guns are bad, they serve a purpose, but we need to have a say. Thank you.
So I support meaningful gun control in our city. I think about El Paso and what was happening around our country, and I think the men in those shootings were coming from men with middle names like mine, with last names like Zach, with last names like Steven, with last names like Connie. We have not addressed the core issue of those shootings, which is white supremacy. And we have to do better. We have to do better at dismantling what that looks like and not only asking ourselves this. We can't take away the 300 million guns that are in our country, but we can do better to make sure that folks get an accurate background check and that we are not just having weapons of war on our streets so that our kids are safe, so that you can walk down the street safely.
So on the issue of gun control, a part of my, my training was constitutional law. You know, I often get the immediate response at the door like, well, it's my Second Amendment right. right. And I go like, yeah, but you don't have a permit for a bazooka or an F-16. You know, there's scales to this. There's, there's laws in place to, to make sure that we treat each other with humanity and respect. And a large part of that is going to come down to the leadership on this issue. For me specifically, when we talk about El Paso, we're talking about somebody who drove 10 hours to find people that look like majority of us here with our last names and our middle names specifically to kill us because they had the access and opportunity to do so. It's not just the, the laws that are being proposed. We have to do preventative risk. And by that, I mean very directly, having a hate crimes task force in partnership with the Office of Equity and Inclusion, APD and the DA to manage data, to better track hate crimes and to help on cultural education so people don't feel that resentment and otherism to the point where they grab a gun and commit an act of domestic terrorism. We don't need that. And that's what I'm trying to plan to make sure we do. We have preventative measures in place to stop the next El Paso.
I'm completely against every single one of those ordinances up there. I'm a big second amendment advocate. I, I carry myself. Reason I carry is because I have, my instant response to an issue is a lot quicker than APD's eight to 12 minute response time to an issue. So something's happened, I feel better, more comfortable, I can respond immediately. Going forward, none of those laws are going to do anything to protect any of those shootings. They're not going to prevent them. I mean, the guy in El Paso drove 10 hours to commit that crime. A 10 hour drive away from Albuquerque is out of, is out of the state. Like I said, the shooter in El Paso drove 10 hours to commit that crime. And it's just crazy. The thing that you can do is have the power to stop that crime right then and there. So I'm against all those ordinances proposed by the city and they're going to do nothing but help criminals commit the crimes. Criminals take advantage of issues like that. Thank you.
What's your position on legalization of marijuana?
So my position on recreational, on recreational legalization, I am in favor of it. It is a social justice issue. It is.
Thank you. As much as I enjoyed the commanding presence. It is a social justice issue. It is also a law enforcement issue when it comes to our resources and how they're used. Right now, I want to commit our resources to establishing a residential burglary unit. We're the, we're the only city our size without a residential burglary unit and making sure we get more homicide detectives to drive down the murder rate and make sure we get that, that closure for families that have experienced tragedy. Right now, our resources can be put well, well towards other things and one of them should not be this issue of marijuana.
On that issue, I have no issues with marijuana being legal. I'm pretty libertarian on all issues. I mean, I believe you should have your guns, your weed, your beer, your cigarettes. I'm pretty libertarian on all, all those issues. Nope, I got it. So I'm all for it. I mean, bottom line, it's, it's going that, it's going that way nationally, so why, why are we going to stop that? And the state, and technically.
Technically speaking, we could, the state can make a little bit of money on that, so why not?
Personal use is no big deal, but marijuana can use weed to help address. Okay? If you're a young kid in high school and you can get weed, what's that gonna do? Maybe we should make an age restriction on personal use. Maybe someone 18 and older likes cigarette leaves? That makes sense. And the other piece of it, as I've heard from the construction industry, what do you do when you have a construction worker? If some's weak and I can't afford it, he doesn't grant them the drug test. Guess what? That's going to affect workers. So we've got to think this through a little bit. I mean, if there are certain percentage that says you can still work, you have it in your system, we've got to work all the people out of system. So I don't want to see that construction workers are not going to be able to work because it's something that I can afford. I want to see something that's in place that's across the board fair. Personal use again, but age restriction. Thank you.
So I support the legalization of marijuana. When we do that though, we have to make sure that those who are most affected by the longstanding drug war are able to get off their feet and be able to invest in that economy and that market when it, when it happens. The other thing that we need to understand too, is that when we talk about legalization, we also need to talk about the destruction of the other black markets that are out there when it comes to meth, when it comes to heroin and what that's going to have an effect on our streets systemically. So that means we need to prepare for that in terms of policies and procedures. We need to have meaningful interventions, social workers lined up for those kinds of interventions in our streets right now so that we can deal with the problem more effectively. Thanks.
Hey, listen, if you're registered to vote, but you changed locations, now's the, now's the time to do it. The eighth is the last day that you can register to vote. Early voting will start October 19th on Tuesday and run all the way to November 2nd. But I wanted to, in all fairness, recognize the gentleman here that said he was with the Ike Benton campaign, right? You're here with Ike Benton campaign? Is there any questions you might want to ask since he couldn't make it himself because he had another meeting, right?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we gave you a fair shot because I know you were recording and I wanted to thank you for being here. So the early voting absentee ballots, person, the absentee ballot in person vote begins in the county clerk's office October 8th. That's also the last day you can sign up to vote. So we're going to give away some door prizes at the end, so don't leave. You have to be present and then we'll turn it back over to Mr. Pete DeNello.
With that, we've only got about eight minutes left, so we're going to go to closing remarks. Before I let you talk, please take a look at my blog, www.peteDeNello.com. And each are going to be given two minutes for our closing remarks.
Subscribe already.
What?
I subscribe.
Okay. So what's the question?
So my question is, when it comes with homeless and come with people.
I can't hear you.
When it comes to homeless, I mean, I know that most of the focus have always been around mental health or crime and all that kind of stuff. But my question is, what is within your plan or in your thought in terms of how do we deal with it from an economic standpoint? Meaning getting them back on their feet. Because there are, there are a certain percentage of people that are not mentally incapable of working. They just, for whatever reason, they end up on the streets. And how, how are you planning to address that issue specifically?
This plan will house 150, 60 people using the APS school buildings that they don't know what to do with. We have a lot of strong support for the campus. I found out we have federal funding. Jimmy's question was, what do we do to help the homeless? Well, those that don't have drug addictions, families, individuals, vets. We don't have near enough places for people to go right now. But I don't like just housing them. I don't agree with Robert. Don't just give them a freebie and a free house and free medical and free needles. That's not the solution. I think the solution is address the families, address the individuals by giving them a campus and getting them back on their feet through jobs. The whole thing about this campus is getting them reestablished to get a good job through the carpenter community, whatever means it takes, get GED. This campus will help them get back on their feet. The other part of it is you guys don't understand. The state keeps blaming Susanna for shutting down mental health facilities. I know Jimmy says they don't go hand in hand, but people on the street who have mental disabilities have no place to go. The state needs to kick in, Deb Haley, the federal, federal help on that side. So thank you.
Do it, just to clarify your question, would you say, you mean like they ought to participate back in our economy?
I'm sorry?
You mean, like, just clarify your question. Do you mean like, how do we get people to participate back into our economy?
There's one part of it. The other part of it has to do with, you know, because I, I don't think that giving people free stuff and housing them is encouraging people to, to have a stake in the community other than getting more free stuff. So my question is, how do we get them to contribute as part of society, whether they are in a home or not? I don't think that you even need to be in a home necessarily to be able to work. So having some kind of a program like that could be helpful as well.
So I'm glad you asked that question because here's something to think about. When somebody stabilizes, when they get an address, when they were surrounded by case management services for mental health subsidies, you name it, they can actually start to see much better outcomes in terms of surviving and thriving and actually living much longer than what they were, than what they were projected to do if they were living on the street. And I can tell you right now, when we actually house people and keep them in housing and surround those services, it's actually more cost efficient and less of the taxpayer dollars that are being spent on keeping people on the street and using the emergency service systems. That's part of economic development, that kind of cost savings. But the other part of that, which I'll mention, is that there should be, we should be building up more programs so that people can, who can get back into work, can get into work so they can actually participate not only just in our economy, but maybe even move on and buy a house, be a homeowner, have that front yard, maybe even buy a house down here in downtown, maybe even start a family, maybe even go back to college and start participating more long-term in the future of our economy.
Hey Jimmy, so I'm going to share some somber facts with you here because I, I think it informs the question you asked. First is, we're at an all time high in homelessness for our city since we've been counting. The second is, the new folks that are coming in aren't coming in from outside the city. It is actually New Mexicans that are becoming more and more homeless, right? Think about that for a second. These are people who had been connected to the economy, you want them to get reconnected to. They had a job. They had this kind of foundation of stability and reliability that they could always count on and it's not there. The question that we need to ask along with that is, okay, after we bring these services and do what I'm saying, you know, public healthcare units going into our district, behavioral healthcare units and healthcare specialists being there, how do we connect them to a job in real time for either public works? We, we mentioned some of the, the trade unions. I'm endorsed by the carpenters union, by sheet metal, air, rail and transportation, by people who do strong technical training and want solid workers. The job demand is there, but the infrastructure and pipeline to make that happen doesn't exist. That's what I've done before and that's what I will do if you elect me city councillor.
Bottom line on the homeless issue, we need to attack it from its two major, its two major causes is mental illness and drug abuse. And technically speaking, drug abuse is a byproduct of mental illness. And we need to advocate for the state to use the drug courts to help to focus more on mental illness. Because when people get arrested for these, these drug crimes, they get put into drug courts, they have to go to rehab, get off, show up, do all that stuff. But the courts don't focus on the underlying cause, which is mental illness. And we, that, that aspect needs to be focused on majorly. We need to advocate and have the state change that for, for these drug issues. So when people get caught for that, that they do need to go to handle their mental illness issues, they need to go to counseling to help get their life back together and go through programs like that. All right, thank you.
Sean Stanton with the SPDNA. Quick question. I know this is out of your scope of authority because you'll be at the city level, but this is at the state level. And I'll argue that the real elephant in the room for crime is the, basically the bail reform that was passed a couple of years ago and the Arnold, things like the Arnold Criminal Assessment Tool where essentially what we have is a revolving door of criminal activity where someone gets arrested for stealing a car, they go see the judge and then it's considered a non-threatening event, they're let out and then they go do it again and again and again. What is your thoughts on that? Because I think that's a huge part of the crime that we're seeing here. Because, you know, if, if there's no personal accountability or nothing to stop you from committing a crime, why would you stop? The question goes to what is your thoughts on the, the bail reform that was passed a couple of years ago where basically if you're not considered a threat to society, which is very wide in scope, it's anything from like house, home invasion, car theft, car burglary, even running from the lawn. There's even been cases where they've shot at cops, but there's a, a very narrow scope that the DA hasn't used in order to try to get them to hold these people. They get arrested, they get let out the same, the next day or the same day in some respects and then they go right back to committing another crime.
That's a federal question if you, and I'm going to let you answer if you want. It's a federal question.
Hello, the, the bail reform is kind of, we need to address that at a state level and the city should be asking the state to address that issue. Bottom line, you are right, people do commit crimes and yeah, there is no incentive to change your behavior because say, hey, it's almost incentivizing for normal people to go become criminals because say, hey, I, I go steal something, they're going to let me out the next day, I'm just going to steal something again, commit another crime. I mean, that, that has kind of left, left the incentive open to all the crimes here. It's left the incentive open to gun crime, it's left the incentive open to robbery, burglary, theft. It's left the incentive to all those crimes because like you said, when, when people get caught, they just get out the next day. But at a state level, we do need, the city actually should be telling the state legislator and passing resolutions to address that issue because it vastly does need to be addressed big time. Thank you.
I completely agree with you because today, if you get stabbed by a homeless person, which the lawnmower repair guy next, just east of Noonday did, he was out of work for three months, the man who stabbed him got three days in jail. There's no consequences and I completely agree with you. That can be city, city chartered, that can be county chartered, that can come on the local level. And even if we have to give people community service, that's better than letting them back out and community service by making them clean up the streets or do something that could make them change their lives would be really meaningful. The other thing that I don't agree with is DWI. In Alaska, if you get a DWI your very first time, your name is published in the newspaper. There's got to be consequences and I completely agree because right now, the crime is roaming, running rampant, people know they're not going to go to jail. Thank you.
Thank you for that question. I think this is the reason why we have to deal with crime at the root rather than at this level that we're talking about. Because underneath it all, when you're talking about incentives, we have to ask ourselves again, this question. What is a criminal before the crime? They're just another person. They're, they're our friends, they're our neighbors, they're our families, they're just like you and I. And when we can start to dig alone at the root of all the crime issues, when it comes to poverty, when it comes to mental health, when it comes to substance abuse, we have to dig at those much more effectively so that we don't have what exactly what you're describing when it comes to stealing a car just to go, just to go to your court date. Why are you stealing a car? Why are you in that situation in the first place? That's really what we need to do as a community when we talk about crime and talking about addressing it at a community level rather than a policy level.
So there's two parts to this question. I feel the first part is, is directly answering on the point of bail reform, right? So that's a legislative fix. And then the issue of that, on whether or not there's, there's leadership on that issue, there's a strong team, both Democrats and Republicans in the state house that are taking a hard look at this issue and trying to make the, the best decision for New Mexico right now. The role of a councillor in that is to make sure that the community interests are reflected at that table and to make sure that they're part of the process in saying, this directly affects my neighborhood. You know, that's really important on this entire note. But I know we're, we're trudging on here and we've, we've been here a long time, so I want to get to the, the core point of that too. Preventative issues that we can do to make sure people don't lapse into crime, it is acts of desperation at its ultimate form. If you look at that, not only from the, an economic side, not only from a healthcare side, we need to make sure people don't fall through the cracks. And for that, I think we need somebody with diligent eyes, who has worked in city government before, who has had that experience. I'm asking for the opportunity to be that person.
So if you would like to do your closing arguments, we're going to do two minutes. Two minutes and, or not even arguments, but your closing statement. And again, I'd like to thank the downtown Albuquerque newspaper and Peter for being here. Make sure you look out for it. It's going, it's available online only, right? And he has some cards here for you and he won't charge you to take one of his business cards home with you, okay? And then we're doing the drawing. You must be present. We have a one dinner for two condos, we have a shift of events for movie theater and we also have one for civil street market, okay?
Once again, my name is Stephen Baca. Born and raised, North Valley native in this area and I've seen it change a lot over the years. And I am, I'm tired of it. That's frankly why I'm running. I'm tired of, tired of Albuquerque slowly becoming, in my opinion, a, a third world country. We need to jump a handle on this. It doesn't matter how hard the issue are, we need to tackle it. Bottom line, that's what we need to do and that's why I'm running. Through the years, we've seen various politicians, Republicans, Democrats, doesn't matter, they always pass around the issues or they, in my opinion, they keep them unsolved so they can campaign on them going forward for their next elections. But bottom line, we, I want to clean up Albuquerque, clean up District Two. I'm tired of seeing it change for the worst. That's why I'm running. Once again, my name is Stephen Baca. City council, or running for this district, look me up. Once again, Stephen Baca. Thank you.
Okay, raise your hand if you know where the borders are. Come on, you guys, participate. Okay, Jimmy, where are the borders? For District 2. This is a quiz. Time's up. The biggest district in the city of Albuquerque needs to be squashed down a little bit because it runs all the way to the river on the west. It runs all the way north to Montano on 4th Street. But if you go to Rio Grande, it runs all the way to Deeds Farms. But if you go into Deeds Farms, only part of Deeds Farms is in the city, part of it is in the county. The only way you know is if their trash can is green or blue. Seriously, it's crazy. On the east side, it's all the way to Carlisle, okay? But there's bits and pieces in between. It's only north of Lomas, north of Lomas, to the east of Carlisle and then south to the Sunport Road. So it's actually very, very confusing. I got this humongous map and I study it every single day because I have literally gone across the street and then the wrong area. The clock starts on me. Okay, why am I the best candidate? Well, number one is, I grew up here. Downtown is my area. Wells Park, District 2, needs complete remake, makeover. Downtown Albuquerque can be something really, really good. I saw it. I was here before any of these guys were even born, okay? I remember when it was a thriving city downtown. I remember when they revitalized this place and the Century Theater was really nice and the transportation was brand new and we had renewed life. When you guys had, you know, you shut down Central and you'd have those events, I think we need to bring that back. The bottom line is, I grew up here, I have experience. If you can't tell, I'm outspoken and I'm not gonna take it anymore. I'm sorry, but Mayor Tim Keller is not gonna say that putting the homeless pickup spot for the West Side Jail is okay. If you go to Cornado Park, my neighborhood, we are blighted. And we have been blighted for 30 years because we have healthcare for the homeless Noonday and St. Martin's. And I'm not saying that those nonprofits are necessarily bad, but when their clients are closing your businesses, when their clients are defecating and cramping all over our streets, nobody can say that that's okay because it's not. And one Albuquerque to me means, if parts of Second Street are flooding, then that's not one Albuquerque. If parts of Sawmill are flooding and don't have lights, then that's not one Albuquerque. If downtown needs more support, more businesses, then that's not one Albuquerque. As I can tell you, places up on Rio Grande where there's nice covered neighborhoods where they don't have vandalism, there are certain parts of District 2 that are A-OK. But for those of us who have major issues, I want to stop being the stepchild of the city of Albuquerque. I want to stop being on the board of Wells Park Neighborhood Association and be ignored when we ask for the city to give our park back and our dog park back. And I am gonna stand up for you guys and I want to hear from you because you're more important, what you have to say is more important than what I do. And I will have regular meetings and I will listen because you're the ones that are important. You're the ones that matter. Thank you.
First, big thank you to Lindy's for having us today. I hope everyone got delicious pie. Big thanks to RC for having us stay and organizing this major event today. Thanks to Pete Donelli for moderating. I really appreciate it. And thanks to people who are registering to be able to vote. Thank you so much for being here because we need to do that. I hope that I can leave you with one thing today, and that's this. We have to expect more from our city council. We have to expect more. This isn't about potholes or filling them up. This isn't about roundabouts or speed bumps or anything like that. It's about major systemic issues that we have to solve today and for our future. It's not enough just to have a good idea. It's not enough just to care even a little bit. We need leadership who is closely connected to our communities, who have shared lived experiences with our neighbors, our families, our friends. And we need leadership who has a vision and a cohesive plan to make those changes happen. And we need a city councillor who knows the importance of including all of you at that table so that that vision can unfold. My name is Robert Blanca Nelson. I'm running for city council District 2. I hope I earn your support in November. Thank you so much.
My name is Zachary Anthony Quintero. And I'm asking for the opportunity to earn your vote and your respect for city council District 2. We're at a crossroads at our city right now. And it's personal on this note. I am tired of running into issues where we have our business owners feel that they're not being heard by our city, where neighborhoods feel that they're not part of the planning process and where young people feel they have no future. That's what motivated me to run. I don't come from a political family. My mom's a teacher and my dad's a plumber. I've worked construction since I was 10, waking up at 4:00 AM with my pops. I know what it's like to put in hard work and be there for the community because I lived it. And I stepped up for this because I wanted to see something not only better, but something truly creative that could be backed up with math and with thoughtfulness and with gusto. And I think that's what we need in city council. We need a jobs plan to connect recent college graduates and high school graduates and trade school graduates. We need somebody that has got the endorsement of both the police and the firefighters and our unions and our brothers and sisters in labor because that shows that they have a strong grasp of the issues and people have bought into their plan. We need somebody that has endorsements from restaurants downtown, like Sisters. That's important. I think we need somebody with that pedigree. I think we need somebody with that vigor. And I think we need somebody who is motivated and ready to lead on these issues. Again, my name is Zachary Quintero and I hope to earn your vote.
Well, you guys, I think it's, all candidates deserve a round of applause. But we got one more. Before you do your applause, I was gonna say, yeah, so we don't have one more, right? See how quick I was on, that was some ad-libbing, right? Hey, listen, I wanted to thank again, it is called Pro Video, Pro View Networks and Steve Davis and his group, New Mexico's first 24/7 sports TV network, for videotaping this and it's gonna be running on the cable channel. Channel again?
46.
Channel 46?
20.
26, okay? And so look out for that. Mr. Pete Donelli, it is so appreciative, we're so appreciative of you coming out and we know you've done so much for the community. And I really do wish that you would run for mayor again one day. You know, I know it's a hard thing to do, but I'd like to thank Lindy's Diner and their staff and their cooks and everything. Give them a round of applause, delicious food. I'd like to thank Jimmy Tranfor Way Beyond Social for always being there for us, Monique Ainsley Casillas, daddy's little girl, and Betty Boop for being out here today and the sponsors such as Tucanos, Lindy's Cafe, you Silver Street Market. We're gonna go ahead and give away the, oh, we're gonna go ahead and give away the coupons. Yes, I would say we can Sean for the last, right? Sean has come on board, he is an airline pilot and he flies cargo planes. So he's always out all over the United States on secret missions and we call him James Bond of the Airways. So he is the vice president. Hopefully he can take over so I can retire. It's a lot of work to be involved in a neighborhood association. And if you haven't had a chance to check out our website, it really is state of the art. And I want to let you guys know, usually when you have an incumbent that is running and you guys all take a little bit of piece of the pie, you know what can happen, right? So you guys have until November to really prove who deserves the most votes. And as I say again, as a resident and not the president, we do need change. And you know, this current city councillor has proved to us that he does not care about downtown businesses or the people who work here. And I can go on record for that, okay? Good. Thank you all for being out here. Food is open, you do have to pay for it. They do have some good draft beer. Thank you all for being out here today.
I've worked with the city in the past. But I was in San Antonio, the city of Congress. We ran the city organization somewhere else up there, so.
Oh, you guys had Tech Channel somewhere?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay. Were you in charge of that?
No, economic development was housed in the same spot, is it? That's why, so I saw the people that were running. I was like, what? Yeah.
Nothing completes a trip downtown like a visit to Lindy's Cafe. You won't find a more relaxing restaurant to unwind at. Located on 5th and Central, proud supporters of Pro View Networks. Lindy strives to be a friendly and welcoming place.